Okay, I think we're back, I think we're back live now. And so, Ms. Sevigny, I'll return to you for the next agenda item.
Okay, great. So, yep, I think I see everybody. Everybody check your, your microphones to know whether you're on mute or not. And as we go for item 5K, I need a motion for the approval of the graduation credits waiver.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Pataglia? Was that a second by Dr. Dorsey?
Yes, it was.
Either way.
Dr. Lockard.
Okay, board members, if you remember, at a previous meeting, we had discussed that the state board had unanimously approved a waiver for all local school systems to reduce additional credit requirements for graduation above the mandated state 21 credits that exceeded the graduation requirements of the state. We are requesting for board approval to waive those additional graduation requirements for seniors graduating in spring of 2020, only to be accountable to the state 21 credits. As we discussed previously, this only applies to a handful of students, but based on this situation, we were wanting to make this available so that our, our students wouldn't be penalized by the pandemic, but rather can graduate on time in meeting the state's required 21 credits.
And Dr. Lockard, you had said that this only impacts a, a very small number of kids. Do you have a feel for how many that is?
I'm gonna ask Cindy to chime in, or Jason, if they know the exact number.
We know it's about a handful of kids. Eric has been working with each of the principals to make sure that the guidance counselors have reached out and everyone has supported the students as we've gone on. Eric, do you have any final numbers for that?
Yeah, I don't know that I can say 100%, but I think the number through our high schools was less than 15. It's a pretty low number, a couple at each school maybe.
Okay. Board members, any other questions or concerns with this? No? Okay, then I will call for the vote. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye please?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously, thank you. Board members are moving on to item 5J, I need a motion for the approval of the school calendar waiver.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Dorsey.
Second.
Second by Ms. Pataglia. Dr. Lockard.
Okay, board members, as we discussed at the April 27th meeting, tonight I'm bringing you this item to approve two waiver requests to the state, to MSD for the 2019-20 calendar. The first waiver request to go to Dr. Salmon is to waive the first five closure days, March 16th through the 20th, as student days from the required 180 days in state law. The state board empowered Dr. Salmon to approve these requests at their April 14th meeting. The second waiver will go to the state board. It's a request to waive June 2nd primary election day as a required public school holiday, and allow it to count as a distance learning day, a continuity of learning day. The state board may waive public school holidays at its discretion. This will also require that we have an MOU with certain employee groups, which we are currently working on, or will be working on. The net effect of these two waivers is that the last student day of the school year would then be June 11th. This accounts for these two waiver requests, as well as the three emergency closure days that were built into our calendar, and the fact that we used one snow day this winter. The other two applied to the sixth and seventh pandemic closures, March 23rd and 24th. So when, we've combed through this about 100 times to make sure it all adds up and works right. And that would, with those two waiver requests, that would put our last student day at June 11th.
Okay, board members, Dr. Lockard, does that, does that mean that we would end up with 175 days because of the five waiver?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
I'd just like to make one point. Back when we had the snow day, some of those mornings were squirrely, and it just seemed like it was gonna be a horrible winter for snow, and it also seems like that was about 10 years ago.
Correct.
Okay, board members, any other questions or comments?
And I'm assuming that, that last day will be more equivalent to like a half day, maybe?
Yeah, those are typically two hour, or two and a half hour early dismissals. I forget how we have it written in the, in the calendar, I can look here.
Yeah, it's usually...
But yeah, that's, that's going to be very much like a, let's see, two hour and 45 minute early dismissal. So that'll be some housekeeping, you know, getting some things in, finalizing, et cetera, correct? That's a Thursday, the 11th.
Anything else, folks? No? Okay, then I will call for the vote. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye please?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously.
Thank, thank you. We have those waivers ready to be submitted upon your approval here tonight. So that'll, that'll happen tomorrow, probably.
Okay, excellent. Okay, and with that, we can move on to section six for discussion, and the, the only item on for discussion is the proposed 10-year educational facilities master plan for 2020 to 2029, and that is a close to 200-page document that we're now gonna try to discuss fairly quickly, but Dr. Lockard, if you wanna take it away?
I will kick things off, and this is just for discussion tonight. We have discussed the EFMP, Educational Facilities Master Plan, in detail the past couple of years, and I believe we all have a working understanding of its design, its purpose, and the contents. It's a, it's a planning document for our capital assets, which the state requires us to revise and approve every year. The timeline for approval begins with us presenting a revised, updated version to you, as we're doing here. The plan is then submitted for public comment and a public hearing before it returns to you for final approval at your June meeting. The final plan is submitted to the state by July 1st. We, we do this process every year with all these steps. The cover sheet that you have for the revised EFMP highlights all the changes and revisions being proposed in the document. Within the plan itself, those changes are noted in marked-up text, and Mr. Kane, our facilities planner is here, and he's gonna briefly explain why those revisions are included, and then we'll certainly answer questions and have discussion. We, we, as we said, we also typically hold a public hearing to receive comment following the initial presentation for discussion and, and, and your formal approval in June. The closures and restrictions due to the pandemic make the possibility for that hearing a little bit different than we would a normal year, and we've been considering what that could potentially look like, and reviewing the process, just that our commissioners just used last night. And so at this point, I've asked staff to explore that similar format, which the county used, where citizens would submit written comments in advance, and we would read those at the public comment, our section of the hearing. And we're tentatively going to schedule May 24th, is that correct, Mr. Kane?
It's May 26th.
Thank you, I'm glad I asked. May 26th at 7:00 PM for the tentative date for the public hearing. Again, May 26th at 7:00 PM for the public hearing, and we'd use the format that the commissioners used, where we'd advertise that in advance, would let people know we want public comment, we'd tell them that we're gonna read the public comment they submit during the public hearing on May 26th at 7:00 PM. So with that, I'm gonna turn things over to Mr. Kane for the, the brief highlight reveal.
So the, the educational facilities master plan is the, is the long-term 10-year plan that identifies the, the current and future facility needs of the system. It's, as Dr. Lockard said, it's an annual, we do an annual update, it's a requirement of the state. There are some changes from last year's plan, and I just wanna real quick go through those, talk about next steps a little bit, and then answer any questions that you have. So to hit the highlights of the changes, I'll kinda go chapter by chapter, or section by section. Section 2, which is the community analysis section, has updated demographic information, which every year I get new information from the census or the county planning office, so I update those, those parts. We also removed the Delaney property from future school sites, and that's to align with the county's recently adopted Freedom Community Plan, which they've identified that property for another use. And finally, this section also includes, there's a few additional schools identified that are going to be approaching inadequate by the county's adequate public facilities ordinance, and those additional schools were Carrolltown and, and Oklahoma Road Middle. They're just approaching inadequate within the six years, so it's, they're not inadequate like Freedom Elementary is currently. Section 3, which is, it's the goals, standards, guidelines section, which, you know, has a lot of the, kinda the system procedures and, and the strategic plan pillars and things like that. There were a few minor changes, just the program descriptions from the instructional folks, real minor, they, again, they were highlighted in red in the text. Section 4, which is kinda the existing facilities section, I updated the inventory chart with new enrollment data and the current 2020 facility condition index scores, and that really is kinda the bulk of that section, so, so that chart was updated. Section 5 is, is the enrollment projections. Every year we put the most recent projections in the, in the plan. Section 6 is really the meat of the facilities master plan, that's where the needs analysis section is. There were some, obviously every year we do an, an analysis, so there's, there are some things that changed from last year, so, real quick, I'm gonna run through them by kinda category. The capacity needs analysis section did identify a few additional schools in the enrollment projections that were, by board policy, either approaching inadequate or inadequate at some point in the plan. The, the Freedom Area Elementary Schools continue to be the most urgent of those schools in the capacity analysis, and I just, the plan notes it, and I just wanna note that the Freedom Area Redistricting Committee, which came out of last year's facility master plan, was in the process of evaluating options to address these concerns. Unfortunately, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the activities of the committee were suspended. We just were at a point where we couldn't continue to, you know, we couldn't continue to meet, and we were at a point where we really needed to look at maps and things in person, and the technology just wasn't able to, to, to do the work we needed to do. At this point, we're kinda on hold, waiting to see, I guess, what, when we'll be able to, to meet again. Obviously, that's above my head, but depending on the timing of when we can resume, obviously the feasibility of meeting the, the original timeline is gonna have to be evaluated, so. As far as the other schools that were identified with capacity concerns, at this point, the plan's just saying that we'll continue to monitor those schools, and the reason for that is, is the, those schools are identified farther out in the plan, in the 10-year plan as, as approaching inadequate, so, you know, they're not as urgent as, as the Freedom Area Schools. So at this point, we do annual enrollment projections, we're just gonna keep an eye on those. If, if it continues to be an issue, obviously we'll have to, the plan will have to address that and come up with a, a more formal recommendation at that point. So that's the capacity analysis. The other part of the needs analysis is school modernizations. The one change there is the William Winchester Elementary modernization was reinserted into the plan and, and pushed Westminster High's modernization out. The reason William Winchester wasn't in the plan last year is it was grouped into the K-8 idea with East Middle, but based on the board's decision last year to move ahead with just the East Middle project, this plan reinserts William Winchester back into its priority order. And finally, the, the needs analysis also looks at those systems, the roof replacements, the HVAC replacements, the window replacements, and there were some changes in the order of those, either based on feedback from our maintenance department, or, you know, in some cases, the, the state and local funding decisions for the FY21 CIP, you know, if we, if a project didn't get funded, it was deferred, and, and once a project's deferred, it could then push other projects back. But that's a, that's a typical thing we go through every year, depending on what gets funded, what doesn't. Depending on our maintenance departments, the work orders or the conditions change at a, at a, at a school, we reorder those projects based on kinda the most current data. And, so that's kinda the summary of the major things that changed, that were highlighted and read again in the plan. The other thing, I just wanna reiterate that the next step in the process is that public hearing. Obviously, things are gonna be a little different this year. We will be doing a virtual hearing, it will be on May 26th, which is the Tuesday after Memorial Day at 7 o'clock, and we'll gather that input, and then the plan is scheduled to come back to the board at the June meeting for approval, because it's due to the state Department of Planning, actually, it's due July 1st every year. So, that's kinda the overview. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Board members? So Bill, I was trying to scroll through the, the document as you were, as you were giving the changes. I think one of the things that we probably should touch on tonight is the, the Freedom Redistricting Committee, so we did give the information to the commissioners yesterday at our joint meeting, and they had requested, Commissioner Rothstein and then, in conjunction with the rest of his commissioners, had asked for the implications document of, you know, what does that mean from a timeline perspective? What are the, the consequences? And, and Dr. Lockard, you had said that we would be, we would provide that information, but just wanted to make sure that we follow up on that, and what our, what our timeframe is on that.
Correct. Ms. Trudino and I talked about that, we, we should be able to have that. I think Commissioner Rothstein was looking for a bulleted sheet, I think is how he described it, so we, we can certainly have that to, to them within the week, 10 days, shouldn't be an issue. We just had a discussion yesterday.
Right, I think we could get it to them this week, and then post it on the, that part of your website dedicated to that work, so that anyone with access to the internet could also review it there.
And, and talk...
Oh, go ahead, Kenny.
Let's see, talking to the commissioner after the meeting, one of his concerns obviously is that it's overcapacity per their zoning, planning and zoning regulations to build more, but he said he's also hearing a lot from students there who he recognizes, if you let them vote today, they all wanna stay there, they don't care if you added a portable, but then also from the middle schools in the area around on how this is gonna affect me, and, and he just said he would like to have an answer to give them, saying, you know, this is the timing. And, and he, he fully understood why that committee couldn't function like we are tonight and, and, and accomplish much, and, and he fully understood that. I think he would just like an answer for his part of the county when they ask him, and, and I was curious, you know, if, if, you know, how, how much dimension was to what he, what he was worried about, and it was everything. It, it wasn't just, just planning and zoning, it was the students, and, and he said then they even talk about, well, when they do that, what middle school will I go to, will I change my high school, and, you know, the normal questions they have. And I think he, he wants an answer on the timing as much as anything.
Hey Kenny, I've said this before, that, I don't, I know me personally, I have not received any emails that anyone wants to leave that school because of overcrowding. That is the highest performing elementary school we have in the county, and that's why I, I say that, because when we talk about redistricting, and everybody else can be redistricted, but not them, so I just wanna reiterate that people have not contacted me and saying, "Look, we gotta, we gotta do something here." No one wants to leave that school, and I understand that.
And just to say it one more time here, and we'll somehow try to capture this in the document we produce, I think Dr. Lockard best described where we are, is we, we simply hit the pause button, but there was not a date certain time to resume, it was sort of, you know, working through a couple of logistics, when is it okay with executive orders and local health guidance, and then even if that happened, we'd have to make sure all of our committee members are still in a place in their lives where, where they're able to participate, and if not, do you wanna pause or add different people? I think that would have to be another discussion we have with you. The only date that we talked about, which really wasn't about the timeline, was that, you know, in some sense, just like the commissioners had with their operating budget, we don't know what all this might mean for our enrollment for at least one year, if not, you know, multiple years. We were seeing increases which weren't large but were nice, and when you comb through Bill's statistics, those tended to, what you teased out was that had to be net, positive net migration into the county, and something like this, you would think might, might also put a pause on that. So, we talked about those numbers, not as a wait for those numbers to, to work again, just that they might be very interesting to see again, and I'm, at this point, I'm not even clear how you capture enrollment unless we're wide open, running in normal mode by, by September 30, 2020. So, the timelines that you have that matter, we're not meeting the original timeline of, of bringing you a report in June, that, that obviously can't happen now. The, the other timeline you have is, is sort of in your rules, is in your policy and administrative regulations, JCAA, and to meet that timeline for this year, we'd sort of need to get up and running again really soon to, you know, A, finish the work, and then get, get a report by the September time, I think it's, Bill says it's September in JCAA to have a, a public presentation, so that would be a fallback timeline, because we didn't meet, we didn't meet June due to COVID-19. So, there's still a shot at that, you know, it depends on where we are as a state and a county, and where our committee members are in terms of their ability to, to continue the work at that time.
And, and I think, and I'm curious, if, if all, if it fell in place whenever, when does something really happen with, with students changing schools? Are we talking about two years from now? I mean, obviously, nothing's gonna happen next school year. Would it the next year? I think that's one of the things people are asking.
Sure, nothing ever was going to happen next school year. You would have received a report, there would have been a public vetting process, there's required hearings in law, and we did talk a little bit about, you know, would you want the world to be normal enough again, so those could be real hearings and not virtual hearings, because this is some, some serious stuff that really impacts people's children and their lives. But the earliest something could happen, even if we could still meet the policy and reg timeline in, in JCAA, would be not this coming school year, but the one after that. So you would receive a plan, you would have public hearings and comment, you would ultimately vote, and, and the earliest you could implement would be, that, that would then be the 21-22 school year, but of course, the Board of Ed has the full prerogative to, to do a further implementation than that, if, if you so chose. You could say we approved this part of the plan, but we approve it for two school years out, or whatever you saw fit based on the information you have at that time.
I guess I wanted to ask some questions about, you know, does COVID-19 have any impact on, and I know we've hit the, we've hit the pause button, but one of the, the things that the community is interested in is from a planning and zoning perspective, right? Like, if, if we think about this from the kids, like, we want, we wanna, we wanna make sure that we're doing the, the right thing for the kids, and right now, nobody seems to, they're making it work. Nobody seems to be screaming to get out of Freedom because they think there's an issue, they're making it work with portables and, and things like that, and it is such a high performing school that people aren't screaming to get out. But that does beg the question of, okay, well, how does this impact, you know, the APFO and, or the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance and zoning moving forward? Is it stopping some building and potential economic growth in, in the county? Is there any way that we could, I mean, is there something that we can do to say, because the situation we're in, we don't want, we don't want the school system to be a barrier to economic growth and delay this process? Can, can we modify the state rated capacity calculation to include the portables as space? Or could we modify the APFO restrictions to, to take into account portable space, or something like that, so that we remove the school system as a barrier, and the, the county would then be able to say, okay, well, and we, we're thinking about doing these, these planning and zoning items?
So I, I can handle that. The APFO is totally within the county commissioners' purview. If they feel that schools are overcrowded and the Board of Ed, say, was, you know, not doing anything, say they weren't building an addition when they wanted, or wouldn't redistrict, they took, the commissioners have the total ability to, to do away with the APFO and open up development as much as they would like. It's, it's not really a Board of Ed decision as far as how quickly development happens or not. The county has chosen to create an adequate public facilities ordinance, and they've decided to make schools one of those standards they measure. As far as where we are currently, Freedom is considered inadequate within the six-year window. They use six years because that's the CIP window for legal reasons. So their, their development within the Freedom Elementary District right now is, for major subdivisions, the planning is... subdivisions, the Planning and Zoning Commission can't approve those developments. Now, the developer does have the legal ability to go to the commissioners and ask for them to override and allow the development to occur. That's within the adequate public facilities ordinance. So, there is the ability in this special circumstance for the county commissioners to make some, whether they would choose to do that without the boards, the Board of Ed's kind of working together, I don't know. That's a question for the Board of Commissioners. But it's legally available to them and to developers to ask that.
And Bill, state rated capacities defined in the regulations of the-
Correct.
High state.
The state formula would not allow relocatables to be counted as kind of part of the bricks and mortar capacity of the building.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I guess I was thinking more in terms of how it would be calculated, not for state purposes, obviously, because it's a very defined formula, but for purposes of an APFO, would the county be able to?
So, again, yeah, the county could change their APFO. They'd have to go through the process. But similar, like at middle schools, they use a local capacity. They could change the adequate public facility standard to use a local elementary capacity. But that's a legal process that the county commissioners would have to go through to do that. They would, it would probably be much less cumbersome for them to deal with individual developers in that Freedom District on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna, I'm sorry. You had said that earlier.
Yeah.
It would be much easier to issue waivers for individual developments than change the law. And, but, but I looked at it because some of the press early on was like, we were delaying development. But other than redistricting, there's nothing we can do. We can't change the rules. The county commissioners would have to change their rules.
Correct.
Right. And I guess that's what I'm suggesting, is maybe we throw that out there. Like, I don't want the school system to be viewed as a barrier to economic growth if the commissioners have another out. Like, don't, let's not, let's try to work with them and talk about, you know, best ways to handle this. Like, we don't need to, scapegoat isn't the right word, but it's like that kind of concept. Like, I don't want us to be used as the scapegoat or a barrier to economic development if there are other options out there. So, let's talk about what those options are. We're certainly not gonna, you know, skirt our responsibilities of, you know, we're gonna, we're doing the redistricting committee. We're looking at it. And we're going to make a good faith effort of solving this issue on our side. But COVID has thrown a wrinkle into it from a timing perspective. So, I guess I'm just suggesting that there's potentially an alternate solution from a timing perspective, so that the school system won't be viewed as a barrier to what the county wants to do from an economic growth perspective.
And that's one of the reasons I wanted to make the point that Mr. O'Neal addressed. It's not like next fall, this is all going to change and they can start building. If they want anything done quickly, they need to look at issuing waivers or changing their rules. We can work on it, but it's just not, it's not going to happen tomorrow.
And one of the things we talked about before, Mr. Collin, with the whole group, was, you know, the county has its legal processes and the ordinances and things it adopts. And they have to be mindful of all of the elements that go with that. But so too do you as a Board of Ed. And it's not just your policy. Ultimately, what you'll be making here is a decision that just history would dictate. If you enact something, someone's going to be very unhappy with it. And the frequency of appeal is almost automatic, if not really, really high. And it's one of the areas where the State Board automatically, it is an evidentiary hearing. It's not a, it's not a kind of a paper review of what you've done. It's a full hearing. And, you know, from past experiences, I think many of us would say, for us and for you, you got to be able to say, we're making a really important decision that impacts people's lives in a real way. And we've got to lay our heads down at night and say, we've made the best decision and the best process possible. And right now, there's a lot of uncertainty. There's a lot of things because of the closure and the pandemic that would make it harder to get to that good, happy point where even though, you know, even though we know some people are going to be probably unhappy with what's recommended or maybe what's enacted, the process has been as clean as possible and opportunities to participate in the process have been as open as possible. And, you know, they may or may not view that as so-called risk. We were using sort of the term risks the other day. But I do think we have, in good conscience, we have to say to you, you sort of need to view that as kind of a risk or an implication for your own work as elected officials.
I remember two years ago when they had a public hearing, and many of the people that were there were, you know, saying the same things as far as, they didn't want any more building because the way 32, there's so much traffic on 32. So, I mean, that's one thing I, when the commissioners were talking about, you know, the economic development and how we might be stopping it, that's just something that I just remembered from that public hearing. It was, the public was asking the commissioners at that time, two years ago, do not do any more building. They didn't want any more houses. They didn't want any more businesses. So, I mean, that's, that's just what I remember.
That's a good point. And you could broaden that point, Ms. Batagley, in a lot of ways. And I think that's the happy coming ground. You have your process and your legal requirements that you have to be mindful of, and so do they. And somewhere in the middle is where you can talk about shorter and long-term resolutions. You know, Ms. Herbert, I think, said, no one's emailed you saying, please move my kid. You won't get any of those emails. But you might, like, if you did a survey, we've done this, you'll get some people who say this school's too full and some kids should be moved. But very few people who say, you know, move my student, you know? It wasn't too hard to get 50-ish percent of people who responded to surveys saying a school should be closed. But no one really thinks, you know, that their school should be closed. And that's why, you know, to your point about that, that's why the public hearing part of this process can't be forgotten either. Even if we could meet, you still need to be able to ensure that part of your process can happen in the best, the best accessible possible way, I think.
Right. And I agree with all of that. And I think the only point I was trying to make was, because we are hitting the pause button a little bit, and that has the commissioners and P&amp;Z folks a little bit nervous. Like, so, like I said, we have no intention of skirting our responsibilities. We're going to go through this process. It's just a matter of timing. And so, if we can remove the thought process that the school system is potentially a barrier to anything that the county is trying to do and say, look, okay, we're going to do this. It's just a matter of timing. So, you should consider in your process, you know, waiver capabilities and things like that, so that, so that we're not, we're not holding you up. Like, we're going to meet our obligations and you guys plan accordingly, right? Like, so, don't, don't point the finger this way and say, we can't do anything because of that. Like, okay, no, we're moving down the path. We're going to make it happen. So, you guys do what's best on your side as well. And so, it may turn out that the community wants them to move forward with economic growth and building, or maybe not, right? But remove us from that, as a constraint from that equation. Does that, does that make sense?
I think that makes sense. And I think if you look at the last however many years here, since the losing students, the Board of Education and the Carroll County Public School System is not anti-growth. Right now, we'd like more students, you know? So, it's, we're not, we're not against somebody building. And as a group. And I think, yeah, it's, but, but to think, our pause is relatively small compared to the time this process takes.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. So, we have to pass forward on that. So, John, you're going to be providing that information to Commissioner Rothstein?
We will, and we'll put it on the website. And I think we're thinking the same way you're discussing. So, hopefully, everything we captures has been captured in the discussions. And I guess the only caveat would be, right now, there's no, there's no way possible in our mind that we can definitively say it will start again on this date and end again on this date. And there are some wild cards. Because even if it does, even if it does, and September 30 enrollments go down, that might give you reason to go, ooh, maybe we need to wait and see if that was just a one-year aberration and we get back to normal. So, the only hesitation would be if someone's looking for an absolute answer to certain questions. The document's not going to contain that. It can explain where we are and how we intend to proceed, but not look for this date and time, because we're just not able to do that right now.
And I think as part of this, so, I think we're, is everybody good on the Freedom redistricting piece of this? I think the one other thought that I had on the EFMP at the moment is our discussion about systemics and how those are funded. And embedded within the EFMP document is a kind of a schedule of when we would do a bunch of the systemics in terms of roof and HVACs, and depending on how career and tech funding and East Middle funding and all of that plays out, and available state funds. We might have to rethink how we're laying out the systemics in the EFMP.
Right. The conversation about, you know, if these major projects get funded, will that, you know, will that make it impossible to fund systems? Our discussion was, we don't think it'll make it impossible, but it certainly may slow down the aggressive rate we've been able to move for the last 10 years. The flip side to that is the reason we've been able to move so aggressively the last 10 years is because we haven't done any, any major modernizations. And if you look at, one of the points we tried to make is if you look at it over time, and Dr. Lockard did a good job of having that conversation with the state in the fall, you know, that sort of follows suit, that the more money you're giving for one project, the less you might have available for others. But using the Winfield roof as an example, there are some creative ways to try, try to use certain things like leftover money to get the state on board sooner. And we still, and we know that there are different perspectives, and we spent a lot of time talking about those with the joint meeting. But we still believe the state does have capacity now to do some bonding. And that, yes, we probably can't do three systems a year, but we could probably do these projects and make a good compelling case to get a system in here and there. And then, once the state's money is done on these major projects, if that's three or four years of funding, then that's now out of the pipeline, and you can get right back to more systems participation from the state. And another part of this, which we kind of touched on a little bit, is that it also would really help us to have a couple of major projects because the state has begun, not formally yet, but talking a lot about using as part of their decision-making for how much money a local gets in a year, kind of this moving 10-year average. And so, the reality of the recession was, we could only do systems. It's kind of a double whammy in that the state is beginning to say, well, we want to look at a 10-year average. Well, that 10 years was the worst possible 10-year average in the last 30 years of 10-year averages. You could pick almost any other 10-year window, and it would be better for Carroll County Public Schools if that's your methodology than the 10 years you're looking at. So, on one hand, it sort of makes perfect sense to say, doing these major projects could hurt systems. There's another, there's multiple ways of always looking at anything. But another way of looking at it, if that's the state's approach now, is doing these projects might actually help us with systems moving forward after state construction is done on them. So, there's a lot of things to think about there. But we don't think, hey, let's, Bill wants to disagree. We don't think it shuts down any possibility of other systems, though.
I would never disagree. The only other thing I would add is that, keep in mind, the Facility Master Plan is identifying the system needs. These roof replacements and HVAC replacements, in some cases are double their expected life, and they are a need. The fact that the funding authorities don't have the money or have chosen not to use their full bonding capacity, or whatever decisions that they've made, doesn't mean that we shouldn't be still expressing that these systems are needed. And keep in mind, this Facility Master Plan is what the Board CIP request is created from. And there is a target to maintain a level of facility condition index. If we were to start being less aggressive or push some of these projects way out, the CIP that is then reflected after the master plan would not be maintaining the FCI because these projects are necessary. You know, we need to get to these to be able to just maintain the conditions of our facilities. So, you know, I think the funding authorities recognize maybe that they need to put additional money. Whether they can or not is obviously something they struggle with. But doesn't, I don't know that it means that we shouldn't still express that there is a need there and that it's real and tangible. And if something isn't done, then there will be consequences. So...
And Bill, I'm glad you went there. I totally agree with you. And I'd actually like to see the FCI projection based on what we have in the EFMP going forward as a recommendation of, okay, this is the pace at which we think that we need to be doing these projects. I'd like to see the FCI projection that goes along with that, because that ties directly back to our strategic plan in terms of, we said, we need to at least maintain the FCI value going forward.
And that comes along with, you know, developing the project budgets, which unfortunately, the way the Facility Master Plan works, the budgets aren't developed until after the master plan. That's when I, you know, I have time to then work on getting the specifics of how much these projects cost, getting the bid information and developing. So, you know, developing those FCI, what the impact of the Facility Master Plan to the FCI, while we can make some assumptions and maybe give you a general idea, really, the best time is once the CIP is developed. That's when we can get a real picture of where we are.
Looking, that's absolutely true, Bill. But I wonder, for the sake of helping the Board on the June decision point, we could certainly look back to the December presentation. And yes, this is an evolution of that document, but you could revisit the data points you did present then and have it for the-
Yeah. I mean, the beauty of doing this annually is, although it's changed year to year, the changes generally aren't major. So, the projects that were in last year's six-year CIP window generally are going to be in this year's six-year window. So, it doesn't, you know, unless there was a decision, oh, we're going to take out these 10 projects, you know, next year, then there would be a change. But right now, the master plan really isn't, isn't a dramatic change from where we were with last CIP request. So, but we can certainly-
That's helpful, President. So, we need, we'll bring that back as part of the June attachments to the June action item.
I think that would be really helpful. I mean, in terms of kind of projecting it out, just to make sure that we're in keeping with, I understand that you're going to have to make assumptions, right, of, you know, how much- Some of the numbers for Career Tech, we do them for East Middle. We can make some assumptions about how much a roof and an HVAC is going to cost at the different schools depending on the square footage that we're dealing with. You know, I think that you can make some pretty grand assumptions that would at least help us understand the moving parts and the dynamics of this, to make sure that we never get in a position again where all of our facilities are deteriorating at a rapid rate and the funds aren't there to replace them. And we're really just trying to optimize everything, right? I think if we can see that projection, we can really figure, it'll give us another point to look at in terms of how do we optimize this whole equation in terms of money from the state, money from the county.
I agree with you, Ms. Batagley. I don't want to see the school system at any point have to go through what happened five years ago, or seven years ago, or 10 years ago, where projects could be pushed back that really need to be done. You know, we need to make sure we stay on top of it. And I think it's really important for us to do and for our kids and for our communities. I really do.
For members, does that seem reasonable? Dr. Lockard, could I also throw it out there, since we've been at this for almost 10 hours straight now? I think folks are done, like, done, done. And if we have any additional comments, that we could have that as an agenda item for next week's update meeting? Like, if they give folks a little bit more time to look through the EFMP and see if there are any additional questions or things that we want to see prior to the public hearing on the 26th?
I think that's a great idea. I will include that as part of that updates meeting and chance to follow up with EFMP questions and comments.
Board members, is everybody okay with that approach?
Yes, I think that would be good, because you're right. We have been at this for a while. And I know one thing I was looking at, just with the special ed piece, I didn't know whether Mr. Shockley knew where those six positions would be headed at the elementary level, because again, it's interesting looking at the staff analysis. So I don't know whether he's still on board or not.
No, he's still on board, and yes, Dr. Dorsey, we went ahead and started doing some of that work. Nick, did you want to briefly talk a little bit about our actual spreadsheet right now?
Sure, so we've been targeting, you know, if this were to happen, where those positions were to be. I'm a little reluctant to say exactly where they'll be right now, but we have a very good picture. We just want to fine-tune things and just run the numbers again, just to take another look at what next year is going to look like, best as we can estimate. But yeah, we have a very clear picture as to where we think these are gonna go.
Right, I figured you did. I mean, just looking at some of the numbers, I want to see how close I'll be to what you come up with.
Yeah, and we, and again, we break down all the data at the school level multiple different ways, so, you know, we have a very clear picture where our needs are.
And Dr. Lockard, I don't know, I have, I've actually gotten a couple of messages from Board members. The EFMP document is a really large document, and it's hard to, hard to look at online, just, you know, electronic version, and make notes, and try to flip back and forth and see things. Wouldn't it, like, I don't know how often employees are going into central office, but would it be possible to get a hard copy printed out and mailed to each one of the Board members?
Yes, yes. I know that.
I print mine out. I print mine out, so please don't send me another one.
Four copies, yes. There, I know Andy's, I believe Andy's scheduled to be there tomorrow and Friday.
Yes, so take care of it.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Andy.
Instead of mail, and I had a question about Friday. I was gonna wait till we got to number seven. But we need to sign a document, so we'll be coming in there Thursday or Friday.
Yeah, just let me know. Yeah, just let me know when you're coming in, I'll have it ready for you.
Well, I was gonna say, we could pick it up instead of have it mailed. But also, what hours can we come in to sign? Do you want us to let you know when we're coming, or just come between the hours of X and X? What do you want us to do?
Just let me know when you're coming. I'll probably be in nine to four, both days.
Wear your masks, everybody, follow all the right protocol when you go in.
I don't know, apparently, the governor said, you know, it's just a recommendation now. So I don't know, we'll see what the county commissioners have to tell us.
I have much empathy for Mr. Singer. And I don't know what the governor said yet today, but I bet it's dumped a lot on him.
Yep.
Okay, so Board members, anything else under unfinished business or new business? Okay, well, with that, I will say that at 5:00 PM on Wednesday, June 10, 2020, we have a board meeting, which may be virtual, but we will update as necessary. It's not on the agenda, but we also have a board meeting, a board update meeting next week. That would be May 20. And Dr. Lockard, is that at 5:00 PM as well?
Correct.
Okay, and that one will definitely be virtual. And I believe that is all. So with that, I will say thank you, everyone, for bearing with us and doing the marathon day and getting done what we needed to get done. Do I have a motion, oh, I'm sorry?
Real quick, just wanted to give a shout out to North Carroll Middle. They did a parade today. They drove around all the North, the North Carroll Middle School bus routes and stopped by neighborhoods and telling all the students hi. I heard, it was amazing, my kids went up in solace. I was very happy that the teachers and the PTO were involved in that. So I like hearing things like that for our community, for our kids.
Very cool. Thanks, Ms. Pataglia. All right, folks, with that, Ms. Herbert?
Yes, I move.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Move by Ms. Herbert?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Pataglia. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, and we will see you on Wednesday next week, if not before.
Thanks, everybody. You just said, "It was so nice."